All right, we are ready to go.
Thank you Kyle so much. We are back in regular session, leaving from the workshops back into regular session. All trustees are present. So at this time, the Grapevine-Coleville Independent School District, Board of Trustees, and the Central Administration, we will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the successes of our district, the safety and the well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers, and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you all very much. And then tonight for our pledges, Dr. Schnouts is going to lead us in both the United States and the Texas pledge. Dr. Schnouts?
All right, if you'll please rise for the pledges. First, to the American flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Schnouts, well, I tell you what, it is nice being able to see everyone spaced and all on WebEx, but I sure do miss seeing our kids come in and lead us in pledges. That's something I am looking forward to getting back to. So at this time, we will move to our monthly Lead 2.0 highlight. Dr. Ryan?
You're on mute, Dr. Ryan.
There we go, thank you. So, we do want to make sure that we are highlighting our Instructional Technology Department who's done so much work to try to get our entire district prepared for remote learning as well as potential in-person learning. And so, we are going to have a presentation that talks a little bit more about that in detail. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Schnouts.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Ryan, and Board, thank you. So, think back to what we heard before the regular meeting and the workshop, and all of the work that's been done to prepare us to start successfully for the 2021 year. Well, all of this is predicated on the professional learning that's taken place this summer for our teachers and staff, and that's been led by our Instructional Technology Team and the leadership of Janie Statch. They've been phenomenal. It has been like drinking out of a fire hydrant for our staff, but they have exceeded the demands and have just been amazing. And we're going to be ready for our students come August. And so, that's because of, we have an amazing team, our teachers are committed, and they are so just excited about meeting the needs of all of our students. So I'm going to turn it over to Janie, and she's going to share about the experiences that we've been through this summer with the trainings of Seesaw and Canvas, and just all that that's entail for her team.
Thank you, Dr. Schnouts. The agenda for our short presentation tonight is we're going to talk about summer professional learning, and then we're going to talk about our Seesaw Activity Creation Project, and then our Canvas Course Creation Project. And then we have a few previews of some things that are coming in the next few weeks. I have with me tonight, Kirsten Diggs, she is the Lead Elementary Librarian, and she has been such a great support to our team this, over the summer. And also, Jack Leonard, he is our Lead Instructional Technology Coach. So, in June, we offered live webinars facilitated by teachers, librarians, and instructional technology coaches on a variety of technology resources. These are just a few examples of the webinars shown here on the left. The Seesaw and Canvas sessions were differentiated based on teachers' prior experience with learning management systems. So, for example, the organizing your Canvas forms that was geared towards teachers who had previously used Google Classroom, so they were familiar with a learning management system, but just didn't have any experience with Canvas yet. We also offered several instances of a Google Boot Camp to prepare teachers to become Google Certified Educators. So they, especially our elementary teachers, have become even more familiar with Google Drive and G Suite than they have been over the past few years. One of these camps started today, and there are 50 teachers participating. Each instance of the camp has filled up, so we're really excited about the demand for that. The picture on the right, I love this tweet because it was sent by one of our instructional technology coaches, and she is giving a shout-out to one of our teachers for what the teacher shared with her about Seesaw. So it just, I think, is an illustration of the collaborative relationships between our teachers and curriculum and instruction as we are learning and growing together during this unprecedented time. These are three examples of Canvas professional learning courses. On the left, teacher's first introduction to Canvas was in the summer of 2019 when we began using Canvas to house our yearly compliance training. It's called FLEX, so where it says, "Welcome to FLEX" at the top. These modules are completed by teachers each summer based on state and federal guidelines, and include learning around things like food allergies, diabetes, and cybersecurity, among many other things. It takes teachers nine hours to complete these modules each year. So having experienced Canvas as a student, teachers had a certain amount of familiarity with the look and feel of it. So when they, for our secondary teachers this year, sixth through 12th grade teachers this summer have been required to take GCISD's Growing with Canvas course. And they are taking this online self-paced course. It takes them through modules on Canvas communication tools, customizing and organizing their courses, and creating activities and assessments, and much more. And they are completing this the summer before coming back to work on August 10th, so that when they are back with their fellow teachers, they will have time to collaboratively continue work on course building and really getting ready for those first few weeks of school rather than learning Canvas at the same time. So, in addition to that, we have offered the Lead to Learn Micro-Credentialing Course. So this is a course that teachers are earning badges as they complete learning around specific technology tools. This is a real, micro-credentialing is really big in the, in the technology world. So, and it's becoming more popular in education. So the examples shown here are screencasting, and WebEx, and NearPod. Those are just a few of our technology resources. And teachers are really excited about earning badges for the learning they're doing. And Kirsten, to talk about our summer Seesaw project.
Thanks, Janie. So this summer, pre-K through 5th grade and special teachers from across the district came together to build activities that correlate with the beginning of the year instructional peaks. Grade level and subject teams were tasked with creating activities in English and Spanish using district and outside resources for the first three to four weeks of school, with the expectation that the activity creation will continue throughout the school year. Guided by curriculum, library, and liaison leaders, the teachers critique their work against the design guide, made sure that they matched grade level peaks, and provided an opportunity for students to apply what they've learned from their teacher's direct instruction. These activities are not designed to take the place of the high-quality instruction that all GCISD teachers provide. Instead, be that show-what-you-know piece that can be completed in a variety of formats and turned in for teacher feedback. Once the activities are approved by the team leader, then they'll be shared to the district Seesaw Library, and you can see an example of lessons that have already been submitted to the district library there on the screen. They're also going to be linked in the curriculum documents so that all teachers will be able to find them easily. In addition to the core academic subjects, elementary counselors work to create activities based on their new curriculum. These activities can be used as circle-up topics for the first 10 days of school, easing students back into that remote school environment and providing the social and emotional guidance that is needed right now. The teachers and counselors who worked on the project this summer have laid the foundation for the rest of their teammates. With representation from each campus, the rest of our teachers will be set up for success when they create their own activities. Those that have started the work here will be able to become leaders on their own campus to continue the project.
And Jack is going to talk about our Canvas course creation.
So, at the secondary level, we have something that's very parallel to what Kirsten just shared with you. In preparation for the coming school year, the CNI Department began thinking of ways that we could streamline curriculum resources for teachers, but also create streamlined experiences for our students and our families at home. And as we were creating these, we kept in mind, you know, how can we use these resources either face-to-face, online, or something in between? So that's what we've been hard at work at all summer. And more specifically, these, this project has been, has been made up of teams of teachers and instructional coaches working side-by-side, crafting at least the first three weeks of content for the school year. And that is for many of our classes in grades 6 through 12, harnessing the power of Canvas so that learning continues no matter where our students are located. And in addition to the academic content that our teachers and coaches have been working really hard on, our counseling department has put in a lot of work creating social-emotional well-being activities and lessons that our teachers can use in Canvas in addition to the academic activities.
And lastly, I just wanted to share some resources that are coming soon. For teachers and students, we, last year, we had the premium version of Seesaw for grades kindergarten through 4th grade. And at the end of the year, we added pre-K and 5th, so all elementary could be in the same system. We have also recently purchased Canvas Studio, which is an add-on to Canvas, so teachers can create videos of themselves and screencasts. And it's a really powerful tool. They can also create assessments. So if any of your, if you've seen student work that was done in EdPuzzle, it's similar to that. But that is an add-on to Canvas, so the video creation is built into Canvas, and we're not sending students outside of Canvas to view videos. And then, lastly, our, whereas in the spring, when students logged into WebEx, they had to enter, they had to type in their name and their email address. This year, they will be logging in with their GCISD credentials, which just adds a layer of security for the student and the teacher. Also, you'll be hearing soon from Communications about a couple of resources for families. One is a Canvas course for parents and students called Passport to Canvas, and it is to familiarize parents and students with the Canvas platform. They will have access to that really soon, and then we'll also share it once kids are back in school. So those that didn't hear about it over the summer will have an opportunity to work through it. There's also something called Canvas Parent Observer, where once the students are enrolled and have attended the first day of school, a parent will be able to be paired with their students. So they'll be able to be in Canvas as observer to see the student view. And for Seesaw, there is a Seesaw Family App. This is something that will be shared, leading up to school, starting by elementary teachers. The teacher has to send the family an invitation to join the class, and then the family, the parents or guardians will select their student, and then the teacher will approve that that is the, that is the right email address for that student. So the parents will be able to see the work that the kids create, and the teacher's feedback on that work. So those are just a few new things that were implemented over the summer to help August be even more successful than the spring was. That's all we have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. I'm sure we do. I'll start out, let me see if I can see everyone. I'm going to have to scroll through. Do we have any questions?
Janie, if you'll unshare, it'll bring back the big screen. There you go, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Jesse? Oh, and I see you, Mindy, I'm sorry.
Okay, Jesse, you can go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Mindy. You were, you were probably first.
Jamie, you said that the Google training was filling up every time, and I'm just going to send you'll continue offering that to meet the demand going forward?
We are. There, in addition to the, these are self-paced trainings. And in addition to these that we're offering as a district, there, we're also, we've also given teachers access to an online portal of trainings provided by Google. But in addition to that, as we get closer to starting school, we will hit pause on the work on Google and focus on back to school because we will have as much time as the teachers need this year to complete that certification.
Thank you.
Jesse?
Yeah, Janie, just a couple of questions. The first one is, are all of these lessons that are being created, whether it be on Seesaw or Canvas, are they, are they all property of our school district?
That we, GCISD owns the copyright to, actually, to any work that our teachers create while they are working for us. So, yes, the answer to that is yes.
Okay. And then would, would all of these be archived in a, in a place where parents and students can then access them at a later date, whether either to refresh, or they just needed some additional clarification? So are those going to be located in a portal where indeed folks can access those later?
So for Canvas, that is a setting that we can allow students to access their previous coursework. For Seesaw, there is, we did archive the classes from last year, and the teachers have access to them. In May, at the end of the year, we sent a message through principals to families to download any student work that they, that they wanted to keep long-term. But moving forward, in Seesaw, the, the, we're setting it up this year in such a way that the work will travel with the student until the end of 5th grade, and at that point, the student and the parents will download the work. But teachers will always have access to it. So, worst-case scenario, a parent could contact a previous teacher, and they would be able to pull up their archived courses.
Okay. And then if I, if I understood correctly, we've made it easier for students to log on and get access and all of that. So, so all students have been rostered, and all the classrooms created, and all that good stuff, correct?
Yes, both Seesaw and Canvas are rostered.
Okay, awesome. Okay, thank you.
That's good. Becky?
Okay, so, a couple of questions. Y'all said that, well, actually, one of the things I wanted to start off with is, you know, I know we're preparing for, you know, this school year and this event, but obviously, this has a lot of value. I like a snow day as much as anybody, but that year where we were out for a week, that was rough, right? And so I could obviously envision us being able to utilize this in the future, both for extended learning, maybe summer school options, and then, you know, those rare times when the snow actually sticks around for more than one day. So that's a good thing. I did have one question, a couple of questions. It said the, y'all are working on the pre-AP core content. Is that also happening for the AP content?
We're developing, the decision was made for the pre-AP version of the course to be developed, and then in about a week, and actually, Jack's working on a video to share with teachers to walk them through, the on-level version of that course and the GT version of that course will be able to take that pre-AP version and differentiate for their students. AP will also, they do currently have access to begin working on those courses over the summer.
Okay. And I was glad to hear this Passport to Canvas, because that was one of the things that I wanted to say, you know, as a parent, I want to know how, how, how would I use this, how would I navigate this to help my kid? And especially, you know, if I'm a new kid to Canvas, how does it work, right? So, boy, the sooner we can roll out that Passport to Canvas, the better. I think the unknown is driving a lot of decision-making for parents right now, and rightfully so. They're navigating to, or gravitating to places where there is information. And so the sooner we can roll out, hey, this is what it looks like to both parents and students, I think the better off we're going to be. It said that, so students can view the teacher video in Canvas. So is that, what you're saying there then is kids are essentially just by dint of logging into Canvas to watch the teacher video, that, that right there is showing us that they have engaged, right? I'm assuming in last spring, we were having to navigate two different systems, right? They might have checked into Google Classroom, but if the teacher sent a video in another way, you might not have been able to track that that was happening. So Canvas allows us to tighten that up a lot more?
Yes. One of the reasons we did not choose Google Classroom, well, two reasons really, it's really difficult to access analytics, and it never got to the point that we wanted it to get with parent access. Canvas can do so much more than that. So it's a very sophisticated system, which means there's a lot of learning to do around it. So we are working to get that parent course out as soon as possible.
Okay. But it sounds like that that sophistication, though, is going to lend itself better to what we need it to do to offer robust instruction versus, hey, I sent you a video, watch it, and then answer these questions at the end. Okay. And then, this is a bit of a security question, and possibly something that Alan might have to help us hammer out with Kyle. So you mentioned that you can have a parent observer where they get to see the student view. You know, we may have some situations where some parents, for example, aren't allowed on campus for whatever reason. And so how does this student view work into security that if I'm a parent and I'm not supposed to be on campus, but can I still log into my student view, or are we able to disable student view in potentially those households where, you know, we might have a security issue?
So yes, we, it will be tied back to Skyward, where we do keep that information as far as who can and cannot access. And so we'll be able to validate that parent to tie them directly to the correct student, and verify if they actually have the rights, custodial, or whatever it is, to be able to see that.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Kyle, they wouldn't have, a follow-up to that question, they wouldn't have camera access?
No, no, no. Then nobody can, like, remote-connect to you and turn on your camera or anything of that nature. It would just be, that, that student view is more that the parent can go in and see what the child's view is within Canvas, so I can almost see what they're seeing. So what my child is seeing in Canvas, I can go in and actually see it from their lens. I won't be able to see the kid doing the work and those kind of things. Does that make sense?
Yeah, a lot more sense. Thanks, Doug, for that follow-up.
And can a parent interact with the child through, through Canvas or Seesaw? They've got that parental access, or is it just observation only?
In Seesaw, they can, if the, if the teacher turns on the access, they can like one of their child's pieces of work, and they can comment on it. But only for their child.
Okay.
And I don't believe in Canvas, there's cross-interaction.
I don't think so.
I think it's only like a view-only.
Can they interact with the teachers through those?
I don't know the answer to that.
Let, let us follow up on that to see what the, if the parent can talk to the teacher through the Canvas interface. We'll follow up on that and let y'all know.
And can they download information, download the projects and things like that to?
I believe they can. I believe the parent can download the, like, the video lesson and so forth. But we'll verify all that and put it in a board update.
Okay, thank you.
Jesse?
Uh, yeah, one other thing, I think, Janie, you touched on this when you mentioned analytics. Will, will we be able, and I know it came up earlier in the workshop, in terms of being able to see when students log on, and, and the amount of time that they spend and things like that. But as far as usage, whether it be performance or usage reporting, will, will teachers have access to, to secure all that information from the work that their students are doing? Not just the amount of time, but in terms of where they're struggling, or where they're doing extremely well? Will we have, I mean, not we, but as, as teachers and the district, will we have access to all of that information as our students are working through these lessons?
I think that's where formative and summative assessment come into play. There are a couple of different quiz features in Canvas. There's also a discussion board that teachers can share with their students as an assignment, so they can have a discussion and have students participate with the teacher and with other students. So, yes, there is, there is a lot, there are a lot of ways that they can assess their students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Trustees, any questions, other questions? Now, I know Jorge, ladies, thank you both very much. And I know Jorge's going to have some questions, and they're not all going to be related to the two of you. He was frozen out of the questions that we had during, the, being able to ask questions during the workshop. So some of his questions will not come to, will not be pertaining to you. I just didn't want you all of a sudden thinking, oh, my gosh, how do I answer this question? So Jorge, I'm going to let you ask a couple of questions that you had.
Sure, thank you. The first question was for Kyle. Kyle, you mentioned that you bought these cameras that allow teachers to kind of teach in the classroom and also kind of live. So how many of those do we have, and would that cover the need? Because, I mean, we, we may have a lot of need for that once we go to the dual, dual mode.
Absolutely. So we have 500 cameras on hand currently. The principals are helping prioritize the classrooms that those are going to go into. We talk a lot about, like, singleton classrooms where it's just the one teacher that teaches that. So that'll be a strong focus. Currently, based on the numbers of what our principals have identified, we have enough cameras. But we also have the portable cameras that are, that we can move around the classroom that we're going to use for CTE. So that's like another 50, if I count those in there. Our total classrooms that have interactive panels is 750, just so you kind of know numbers altogether. So we are looking at additional cameras, but honestly, I don't want to overextend ourselves on buying a lot of stuff yet. But I believe we have enough to get us covered 85%. And then if we need, if we look like we need to go further, we'll be able to acquire the rest of the cameras pretty quickly. And installation takes really about 10, 15 minutes per classroom. So once I have the stuff, it's really easy and quick to get in.
Okay. Can you talk about how technology is going to allow teachers to do real grading? I mean, we're, you know, we did pass and fail, and now we got to do real grades. I mean, how's that going to work?
I can talk a little bit from the technical side, then I'll let Lance and Sheila maybe talk more from the academic side of grading. So technically, inside of Canvas, it's going to allow for what we call grade passback. So when they grade assignments and do all that in Canvas, it'll automatically go into Skyward, like a traditional assignment would. So the teacher's not going to have to be like double-entering grades and keeping up with assignments and those kind of things. So from the technical aspect of it, it's going to be able to pull all assignment quizzes and all that stuff from Canvas, any numerical grades or whatever grades they do, over live into Skyward as well. I don't know, Lance, if y'all want to talk about grading and how that's going to look different, maybe from the pass-fail perspective?
Sure, I'll, I'll talk, and Sheila can add in.
From, from the elementary perspective, you know, we, we went with the pass/fail to, to get us through the end of the, the school year last year. Our intent is to have a traditional grading model where students submit assignments, teachers are giving them a traditional grade of five through 12, and doing assessments online. Kyle might be able to talk a little bit about edigence, which is a program that we're going to be utilizing to provide those assessments online. It provides some measures to prevent academic dishonesty in varying test questions and the ability to ensure that, that, that the kid taking the test isn't sitting next to their neighbor getting the same exact test. So, it does provide some variance to ensure the accountability and integrity of the assessments that we're going to be giving. So, our, it's our, it's our belief that we'll be able to provide a, a traditional grading model, five, 12. And then, Sheila, you know, the standard-based report cards at the lower grades.
Yeah. So, basically, we are reverting back to what our board policy is for grading, which is standard-based report cards for pre-K through fourth grade. That's really possible through activities posted in Seesaw. Also, the use of Google Classroom and Google Documents. We will have additional capacity to, for teachers to meet in small groups through their WebEx. We are looking at how we can adjust our beginning-of-year assessments and do portions of that web-based online through the live sessions. So, we've really tried to make sure that we've kind of addressed each area of grading, and we'll be able to move forward with that. There are a couple of ways that we previously had assessments in the lower elementary grades that really are given one-on-one, teacher to student. We're still working on the details of what adjustments we may need to make for those assessments. Otherwise, we feel like we're going to be able to provide the grading in the same form that we have for standard-based grading prior to the pandemic.
So, you guys showed a, a schedule for the elementary schools. When you have these live sessions and then these, these other color that show, like, individual work or group work. I mean, I done, you know, I work in MS Teams and some other ones, and some of these are not that simple to go from just a classroom, everybody to go to individual, small groups, where the student will have to make that change on their own, you know, in, in, at the house. So, how, how's that going to work? How are we going to train them to make sure that, hey, we're done with this lesson, you got to meet with these four kids on a small group? Or, you know, that, that doesn't seem to be that simple for a second grader, for example.
The idea isn't that we would ever have a small group of students by themselves. So, there's going to be a teacher or an instructional peer professional that's monitoring any of that small group activity. And just as our students are able to log into the designated, say, live teacher-led math lesson, the students will have a similar link to log into what might be their specialized GT lead class or their dyslexia intervention. So, they are going to have multiple links that they will access, depending on what the content, the teacher that is leading that group. Being that we are able to push that through the Seesaw Learning Management System, we definitely feel like it's going to be easier for our students to keep up with what, what to do when, because it'll all be in one management system.
Are you guys planning to do some sort of naming, you know, structure on documents, for example, so that when the, when the parents are helping the kids, you know, they will know, hey, this is the latest version or whatever, the schedule? Or something like that? So, people, you know, can help their kids make sure that they have the latest information? Is that something that you guys are, have been considering? Because a lot of time, you can pull, download documentation unless there is a specific name or a date or something like that the parents can see, that they know this is the latest version or whatever, then, you know, just kind of make sure that kids have the latest information that they need to use for the homework? Or, you know, I don't know, that's something that we did in the spring, but that, that is an issue that parents mentioned to me.
There is a naming convention that we're recommending for Canvas assignments. There are several different types of assignments. And so, whether it's a, a discussion or an assignment or a quiz, we're recommending that they include that in the name of the assignment. And also, there is a calendar built into Canvas that color codes the assignments by course. So, that will make it easy for students to see when the assignment is due and which course it applies to. But beyond that, I don't think we've said anything specific about naming conventions.
Okay. In terms of getting kids, you know, I know that there was a question about feet or hour and allowing kids to go to a high school, to, maybe middle school, kids going to a high school to take a math course. But are we ready to support the students that are doing telescoping within the same school where they have to show up in a specific class that is not part of their grade? You know, a, a fourth grader going to a fifth grade class, they have to show up at a specific time? How are we going to make sure that that happens? I mean, is coordinated with the students?
Those are some of the aspects of having a common learning management system, so that no matter the course, the students are familiar with how to navigate for their assignments. So, whether it is their telescoping teacher or their regular second-grade teacher, they're going to have the same system that they're working within and know how to navigate that. That's part of, as we discussed in the workshop, some of the things that we want to be able to share with our parents, so that our parents are able to kind of understand that learning management systems. It's not all the teachers used that last year. And be prepared for the students also to navigate that. It's kind of a, a different way to get back to school and have some of those informational sessions, not only available for support videos, but some of those small group and individual sessions to make sure that we are set up for success and that our students and parents can navigate.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have an answer to a previous question about parents communicating with teachers through Canvas, and the answer to that is yes, they can.
Thank you. Jorge, is that, that your question? Or does anybody else have any questions?
I mean, I have non-technology questions, but I don't know if I could ask for them now, maybe wait for later, you know? After the meeting.
Um, okay. So, any other questions for, regarding technology at this point? None? Seeing none? Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Janie and Jack and Kirsten are, are leading this charge, but there are so many people that are involved in it. And just like it's new to the people that are hearing new terminology and, and new, new types of learning systems, everybody is learning, everybody is growing, and it's really hard at first, and then you, you can really pick up some momentum. So, to Kirsten and to Jack and to Janie, thank you for your leadership. You've been leading since before spring break in the same kind of ways, and, and we just really appreciate everything that you're doing. And thank you for presenting to the board tonight. This is not easy, but you know your work so well, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, ladies. And sir, I don't want to leave you out. Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll move on to open forum, and I do believe, Doug, that we did have someone sign up.
Yes, we do. We have one speaker tonight for the open forum. Next on the agenda is the open forum section of our video conference board meeting. Any person who is not scheduled on the agenda may address the board via video conference during the open forum section of the board meeting. The request to speak Google form must be submitted by 6:45 PM prior to the start of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board is restricted from discussing or taking action on items presented during the open forum if the item is not listed on tonight's agenda. If an issue mentioned on, is listed on tonight's agenda, the board members may respond to comments when the agenda item is considered. In addition, this is not the forum that the district has provided to raise and resolve complaints about individual employees or students. We, we request that persons speaking in an open forum on items not on the agenda refrain from raising complaints against such individuals or personally identifying them in any way in their remarks unless it is pursuant to the district's grievance policies. Please contact the appropriate administrator to address your comments or concerns. There's generally a three-minute time limit on individual presentations. If groups wish to speak on the same topic, the board may ask, but it is not required, that a spokesperson be appointed to, to speak for the group. The board member may extend the additional time at her discretion or shorten the allotted, allotted time for each speaker to not less than two minutes if the speaking requests are so numerous as to hinder the orderly conduct of the board's meeting on the day of business. At this time, we have received a completed request to speak form for the open forum. The district will add you to the teleconference, and each individual will be announced in the order received. Tonight's speaker is Ms. Randa Foster. Randa, please go ahead and state your full name and address and, and let us know what you think.
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Great. My name is Randa Foster, and I'm at 100 Sagamore Court in Grapevine. My primary concern is that as a parent of multiple kids in primary education, their attention span for learning on Seesaw or any of the great tools that we are lucky enough to have, it, it's really hard for a working parent to maintain their own work on top of taking care of their kids and making sure their kids are really learning from these tools. So, mainly, it's how can we actually adhere to these schedules? Because they look very intimidating and cumbersome with attendance for every time and other interactive tools. Is that a long enough question? Sorry.
That is.
Thanks, Doug.
Yeah. Well, well, thank you, thank you, Randa. I appreciate it. And as you know, we can't comment right now. But I think one of the administration will, will make, get back to you on that. And that's, that's it. Randa, you're our only figure tonight. So, uh...
Great.
Madam President, back to you.
And we will certainly, someone will certainly reach out to you and talk to you about your question. So, don't feel like that this is an end point for you. I know someone will be reaching out to you. If not tomorrow, they're, they're shortly after. So, thank you very much. Okay. We will move on to reports of the superintendent. Item A, Act on Recommendation for the Colleyville Elementary Principal. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this is an exciting time in the life of Colleyville Elementary School, and the first thing I want to do is to say thank you so much to Sheila Schimmick, who has done such a tremendous job of leading Colleyville Elementary School for several years. And, and congratulations to her on her next opportunity as the principal at Heritage Middle School. And so, that then provided us an opportunity to select leadership, to be able to carry on the work at Colleyville Elementary School. And, and we do have a process, and even through this COVID shutdown, we followed our process with gathering portrait information, as well as using a committee of central office people, as well as campus staff and campus parents as, and teachers, to be able to help me decide about the recommendation to you, trustees, for the next leader at Colleyville Elementary School. And so, that process was followed. And so, throughout that process, one person continued to rise to the top, and that's one of our own, Tracy LaFara, who is currently a, an assistant principal at Glen Hope Elementary School and has several years in the district as teacher and liaison and assistant principal. And so, I'm honored tonight to, to make the recommendation to the board of trustees to approve the recommendation of Tracy LaFara for the Colleyville Elementary School principal position.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion? Jessie?
Yes, I moved that we approved the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Jessie. In a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mindy. Any questions? None? Seeing none? We'll take a vote on the motion. Are all those in favor? I can see. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Now, we can, we're going to bring her, Ms. LaFara on?
All right. Looks like you're on, Tracy, if you want to turn on your camera.
There we go. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you to Dr. Ryan and to the board. I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to serving the students and staff and families at Colleyville Elementary.
Well, we are, we are thrilled to have you come over, and as Dr. Ryan said, you had, with Ms. Shiver, you have big shoes to fill over there, but we know we have great confidence in you, and Colleyville Elementary School is very fortunate to have you coming over.
Thank you.
So, welcome. So, we're very, very happy. So, thank you. And everyone's applauding. It's very quiet.
Thank you very much. You too.
Have a good night. I'm saying, doing it this way.
It's different.
It is. We'll move on to item B, Act on Scheduling a Public Meeting to Discuss the Proposed 2020 Tax Rate and the Adoption of the 2020 Tax Rate. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, the Property Tax Code, Section 26.05, requires the board trustees to adopt a tax rate by resolution at a public meeting before the latter of September 30th or the 60th day after the date of certified tax rolls received by the taxing unit. So, there are a lot of different rules about when you're supposed to adopt the tax rate, and you have to advertise that on June 5th, 2020. And prior to the adoption of the 2020, 2021 budget, the district published a proposed tax rate of $1.3131, the combined rate of .9564 for maintenance and operation, and .3567 for debt service. Did that in the Fort Worth Star Telegram. The district is going to receive certified values from the appraisal districts either today or tomorrow, and are going to submit those to TEA. And so, we get to the point of where we have to schedule the meeting to adopt the 2020 tax rate by law, and so, we have to do that in August this year. So, the recommendations for the board of trustees to schedule the meeting to adopt the 2020 tax rate for August 24th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the Administration Building, 3051 Ira E. Woods in Grapevine, Texas, or via video conference.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommend, recommendation?
So moved.
Thank you, Doug. In a second. Becky, second. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I do have one. If, if we are, if we do it in person at the Administration Building, is the Administration going to be, building going to be ready by then?
Well, if we're at the Administration Building, that will signal that, yes, it will be.
I know, my question is, there are renovations going on at the Administration Building?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure, I don't know the schedule for when, when it's going to be occupiable.
So, it is on schedule to be able to be occupiable by then. Paula, I'm looking at you. I don't know if you can tell that I'm looking at you or not, but am I pointing this there?
You're in the wrong part of the corner, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, but actually, he broke up as he was asking part of his question, so I didn't hear when.
Yeah. He was asking... Yeah, he was asking if you would guarantee us to be able to meet in the building.
By what date?
By the next, by the August 24th meeting. Is, is, is the construction going to be completed by then? Is the question.
The construction will be nearly completed, but we will be occupying the building before that date in August.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jorge, I cannot, before we go for a vote, I can't, there we go. Okay. We'll take a vote at this time. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Move on to item C, Act on Agreement, Act on, Act on Agreement for the Purchase of Attendance Credits. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this is one of those sort of distasteful items that we have to do, and that is to be able to pick the way in which we'll have to give back our Robin Hood money to the Texas... Education Agency. And so you can see there on page 12, there are listed five different ways that we can do that. Really, most of those are not viable anymore. They're still in the law, but they're not really viable to be able to do. And so purchasing attendance credits is typically what this board has decided for many, many years to be able to compute the Robin Hood payment that goes back to the state of Texas. So the recommendations for the board trustees to approve the agreement for the purchase of attendance credits for the 2020-2021 school year and delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, Chapter 49, to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, and also for the 2021 school year, the board delegated contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, T E C 11.1511(c)(4), to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under T E C 48.257 and T E C Chapter 49, Subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education is authorized under T E C 49.006. This included the approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credits.
Thank you, Jesse. Do you have a second? Doug? Thank you, Doug. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
And I will call the board's attention and the public's attention to the fact that it is now Chapter 49 that rules over the Robin Hood districts and not Chapter 41, which it used to be for many years. So that's, for a lot of us that are accustomed to being, talking about Chapter 41, now we kind of have to change our vocabulary to be Chapter 49 district.
No comment. We'll move on to, well, we are removing item D. Dr. Ryan, you want to explain the reasoning?
Yes, item D is being pulled this evening. Actually, during this meeting, we've received word from the Tarrant County Elections Office that we'll be adjusting, because of the COVID-19, we'll be adjusting the dates for early voting. And since the order that we have is not updated, the board would need to, even if we approve this order tonight, the board would need to come back and redo the new order. So we're pulling item D, and before the deadline, we'll bring it back to the board of trustees to call and order the board election for November.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. We'll move on to item E, Act on Endorsement of Candidate for the TASB Board of Directors, Region 11.
So this is something that happens every year. I'm not sure of the name of the endorsed person, Madam President. Do you have that particular name for us?
You know, we are going to have to open this up for discussion. We've had three different names, and being that we cannot discuss this prior to this meeting, we had to wait till tonight to have that discussion. Can't come to a conclusion if you can't have a meeting. So, so if you can make a motion that we, or I'm sorry, if you recommend that we move to...
Name a candidate.
Name a candidate from the bios that were received, and we'll open it up for discussion on who they would like to see in that position about that. Thank you, Jesse. That make sense? Dr. Ryan?
It does for me, yes. And my assumption is then that you would be opening that up to our board to be able to make nominations.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This is for the TASB Board of Directors, which is, that group is charged with carrying out directives established by the Delegates and Delegate Assembly of the Texas Association of School Boards. These are all elected by the bodies of school boards across the state of Texas. And so, Madam President, I would assume that you would call for nominations?
Yes, sir. At this point, we will call for a nomination. Do I have anyone, Becky?
I'd like to nominate Julie Cole from HEB ISD.
And Jesse?
Yes, before I nominate someone, would you please read the names of the candidates, please, and the school district?
Will you give me a moment?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I just have, I'm so sorry. I've got to find it.
Do you need him, Lisa?
Do you have him available, Becky?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So for Region 11, Position C, the trustees who have garnered one endorsement each and have been nominated by their boards are Doug Chadwick from Denton ISD, Justin Chapa from Arlington ISD, Julie Cole from HEB ISD, Daylon English from Little Elm ISD, Karen McCucci from Mansfield ISD, and Ryan Ray from Crowley ISD.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
And all the bios were sent to you all last week and asking for any recommendations, and that's where we started getting more than just the one. So if we, if we don't have any other nominations for that position, or you have others?
Yes, I do. I was just asking for the names so my fellow trustees would all have the names. I'd like to nominate Doug Chadwick, Denton ISD, please.
Okay. Now y'all are going to have...
Would you like some rationale, or are you just asking for nominations and then we?
No, if we could, if you both, does anyone else have any nominee that they'd like to present at this time? So if I go back to you, Jesse, or Becky, I'll start with you. You had nominated Julie from HEB.
Right.
If you could give us a little of the background on that and the reason why you're nominating Julie.
Sure. So first of all, all of the candidates who applied for this position, I believe actually all of them, with one possible exception, even applied when there was a position open last year, and that's the position that I ultimately secured at convention last year. And so just to kind of refresh ultimate memory as to how this will work, if a trustee does not garner a certain number of endorsements when, during the endorsement period, then this then gets forwarded on to convention. And so right now, we've got the ability here to put forth a name for nomination. And the position on the TASB board, I mean, the, each of the education service regions gets a certain number of seats or representation on the TASB board. And this is laid out by size of region and in certain cases, just the size of district. There are some school districts that are so large that they receive automatic seats. For example, Santa Ramos from Fort Worth, Dan Mitchgate from Dallas ISD, those are automatic positions. So in the case of the TASB director, they're joining a group of 40 other trustees to help run the School Board Association for the entire state. Again, every education service region has at least one representative on there, and it is indeed a leadership position, not really a developmental position. And all of the candidates are very, very strong. There's no doubt about that. I think in particular, Julie and Karen from Mansfield have really compiled a very strong resume of school board governance at a very high level. So Julie has had numerous opportunities holding the board president position in HEB ISD. She's employed by Fidelity Investments, and her resume that she submitted really speaks to the level of involvement that she has over there in HEB ISD. I know that they are up for Board of the Year again. This is an additional recognition that that board has similar to the one that we won. And I think she just really brings a lot to that position in terms of leadership and experience. She's been a trustee for seven years now, and her term won't expire until May of 2023, and so she would bring some longevity to that position as well. And so for those reasons, as much as I like all of the people who have put their name forth for this position, I think Julie would fill it the best.
Thank you, Becky. Now, Jesse, you had nominated Doug Chadwick with Denton?
Yeah. Let me start off by saying that I agree with everything Becky said. Julie would be phenomenal to serve as a director, and all the others, including Karen. The reason that I am nominating Doug is for the simple reason that, as you know, I'm past president of the North Texas Area Association of School Boards, and that represents Regions 10 and 11. And there were several of us besides myself that we ended up moving off the board since our terms were up, and both Julie and Karen have filled those two open spots on the NTASB board. So they will be directors, executive, on the executive committee for the association for the next two years. So given that fact that both Julie and Karen are going to be in that leadership position within NTASB, I felt that Doug, who's been very involved with Denton ISD, as we know all of the trustees from Denton have been, but he's also attended conferences, SLA and TASA TASB, he's also been very involved in attending our quarterly meetings that we've had as an organization. So I just feel that any of the folks that get, that have been nominated and would get voted in would do a fantastic job. And like I said, I totally would support Julie, and I would support Karen as well and the others. However, I just felt that Doug would also fit that bill. So for that reason, I would like to nominate Doug Chadwick.
Okay. Thank you very much. So at this point, I guess we will vote individually for either Julie or Doug, and then after that, we'll make a motion to, tell me if, I'm sorry, Louis?
So I had the pleasure, because we've heard from two people that have nominated two candidates, and for our other trustees and those listening, I've had the pleasure to serve with both Julie and Doug, and from a master trustee certification three years ago. And you know, just like, I appreciate Jesse saying that Julie would be a great nomination, and also with Becky saying the same thing about Doug. You can, it's tough, because I know them both personally. They both have great resumes, and for the other trustees, this is difficult for me to even vote, because I know them both personally and worked in them small groups and on different projects. And both of them, we'd be honored to have them as on the board. So I just wanted to come at it from someone that didn't nominate either one of them, but from a neutral standpoint to just say, I know it's not very clear, but either one is good.
It'd be nice if we could give each one of them some votes.
That's right.
Unfortunately, we have to, have to choose one. So I'm thinking what we will do, we've never had, we've never had to do it this way today. So thanks, Jesse. Got to change it up on us while, you got to add some little difficulty before your term is up, don't you? So what we'll do is I'll ask, we'll vote individually, those for Julie or those for Doug, and then I'll ask Dr. Ryan then to give a recommendation for whoever gets the most votes, and we'll have a motion for that particular trustee to be the new TASB. Does that sound correct to the rest of y'all? Okay? So the first one we have, we will start with Doug Chadwick from Denton. Those in favor to have Doug as our nominee that we would have for TASB Region 11, raise your hand. I'm seeing two. So those for Julie? I'm seeing five. So our nominee, Dr. Ryan, then, will be Julie Cole with HEB.
Certainly. The recommendations for the board trustees to endorse Julie Cole from Herschelus Bedford Independent School District to fill a position on the TASB Board of Directors.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Jesse. In a second.
I will second that.
Thank you very much. Becky, any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
And just as a reminder, you know, this isn't, there's all the other school districts in Region 11 that are voting on this, so this is a little bit...
Yeah, our, yeah, this is all one, just for one vote.
Yeah, yeah. So there's a long way to go.
You know what, you know what, I'm happy that we had the conversation in that we can see that, how important it is to have the right director in there, and we had five, five great candidates. So I'm happy that we had the discussion and able to do it this way. So.
Well, I think, Lisa, if you don't mind, I think Jesse brings up a great point of how important NTASB is in developing leadership opportunities for trustees as well. And so that's something to be aware of as well.
Thank you, Becky. That's true.
Thank you, Becky.
We'll move on to item F, Act on Appropriation of the 2005 Undesignated Bond Surplus for Classroom Furniture for the Collegiate Academy Campus. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, we're all aware, the wonderful partnership that GCISD enjoys with Tarrant County College to be able to provide the amazing educational opportunity of the Collegiate Academy there at TCC. And Tarrant County College has offered us an additional 1,600 square feet at the Collegiate Academy building, and they're moving staff out of this area, and they're renovating the space to fit our needs. And this additional space in the building will provide three additional work areas for staff, a large conference room, and a small private meeting area for students and staff, and an open meeting area at the entrance that's going to be used as a go center for students at the Collegiate Academy. And it's also going to provide a lot of storage for campus university intersclass, intersclassical league, one act play equipment, athletic equipment. So it really is a very needed opportunity for us. TCC is going to cover the construction costs and simply ask us to provide the furniture inside that space. And we're estimated that to be at $30,000. So we, again, certainly appreciate our partnership over the many years with TCC. Recommendations for the board trustees to approve the appropriation of 2005 Undesignated Bond Surplus Funds for Classroom Furniture for the Collegiate Academy Campus at Tarrant County College District in the amount of $30,000.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Becky?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
In a second. Mindy?
I second.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Other than what a great partnership we have with them, just, how many lives are being changed?
And that space is so needed over there.
Yes.
I came over there for lunch several times, and we're just sprawling in the halls. So it's very much, very appreciated.
Yes, very much needed. Seeing no question. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item G, Approved Change Order Number, I'm sorry, I can't see that. Oh, Approved Change Order Number One, Closing Bid Package C, renovations to Colleyville Middle School, Cross Timbers Middle School, and Dove Elementary School.
Yes, this item does close up. It is a change order, but it closes up the whole thing. So for Bid Package C, for those three particular schools, the change order releases $416,666.18 to the district. And so that's a combination of unspent contingency funds and an allowance in the construction contract, and the difference in the actual cost to buy these subcontractor contracts. And so the recommendations for the board trustees to approve Deductive Change Order Number One for Construction Bid Package C, renovations to Colleyville Middle School, Cross Timbers Middle School, and Dove Elementary School, which closes this package and releases $416,666.18 back to the district.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Becky?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky. In a second.
Okay.
Doug, a second. Any questions? Seeing, Becky?
Well, that's a question, but really...
Well, it's a question, but really, you know, this is a sign of hope that we're going to get back into classrooms at some point. And it's a bonus when it's returning money back to the district, too. So I appreciate everything Paula does on these bond projects, but especially when they come in under budget. Yay.
Very much to Paula and the team. That takes a, that's a team effort to do that, so that you're right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. That is all of our action items, information only for the next items. Item H, update 2016 bond program.
Yes. So Gary should be here. Looks like to me he's getting ready to present to us about the updates of the bond program. Paula, anything else to add?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Paula, did you have something? Give me a roll. Okay. Dr. Ryan, thumbs up if you can hear me. Just want to make sure. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Kyle, thank you for scrolling through the presentation for us.
Hold on one second. Paula, Paula seems to have something there. I want to see.
I can barely see her.
Can you talk, Paula?
Yes, there. Thank you for unmuting me. I cannot do that now that she's going to grab Gary before he took off there. So sorry. Because my arms were not, I probably look pretty foolish on the playback video now. I can imagine. So a lot of work is underway in all of the five campuses that we've had under renovation, the swim center and the admin building. And I do just want to remind the board and those listening that Lee Lewis has been working through a lot of challenges with material supply issues, manpower losses due to the pandemic. We've even had a handful of instances where one or more of our sites were closed for a day, a day and a half or so, while disinfecting was taking place due to possibly somebody who was symptomatic, that kind of thing. But I want to, there is a group that I particularly want to call out as being just an incredible partnership with our district. And that is a distributor by the name of Texas Air Systems. So that company has worked with the district for a while. And when one of the plants, or the plant that provides some of the HVAC units, rooftop units that are coming to our district, lost a third of its workforce due to a part of an outbreak, they stepped up to really work with that plant, work with whoever they could to do some incredible things. Obviously, production slowed down tremendously. And some of the initial reports were that units weren't going to be arriving until sometime in the latter part of September, some mid-September or things like that. Really put us in a tailspin there for about a week's period of time while they worked on a plan, pulled whatever strings and magic that they could, and were able to improve those dates significantly. What's more, they stepped up to the plate in working with Lee Lewis to promise and provide spot cooling where needed, so that Lee Lewis could continue their construction work, if you will, because finishes, for example, like flooring, don't do very well in very hot, unacclimated conditions. You don't install flooring, as an example. And so for them to be able to keep moving on the project, Texas Air Systems is working to be able to provide spot cooling in some places so that work can continue. So that is a tremendous partnership. It's very encouraging when you can see that kind of thing. And certainly want to give a shout out to them for what they're doing to help keep our projects moving forward. That's not to say that we don't have a lot left to do, and that there aren't still supplier chain issues in different ways, and not all HVAC units will be here. But Lee Lewis is doing a terrific job, and their subcontractors are keeping existing equipment operational so that our schools experience the least amount of challenge or disruption as we move back into them. So with that, Gary, I will now turn it over to you. And please let me know if everybody can see, you've probably seen my whole screen at this point. You can see the presentation. Is that there for you?
Mm-hmm. It is. Do you want to go into the presentation mode, Paula? Or you want to just click it? Okay. All right. Perfect. Well, good evening, Board. Dr. Ryan, it's really good to be back with you. And Paula, you said it really, really well. There's just a tremendous amount of work that's gone on, and just teamwork through and through. And Paula reminded me a couple of weeks ago that this was the board meeting that really, generally speaking, in July, that has quite a bit of information. And we're at breakneck speed to get projects finished. And there's just a lot of dust flying. And so we're going to try to capture some of that here. And happy to answer any questions you might have. And I think between the two of us, Paula, we can probably field most questions. But wanted to really give you a little bit more in-depth overview of where we are with the projects that are currently underway. So we'll start at Grapevine High School. And just a quick update, we've been talking a little bit about the gymnasium flooring, so that's now complete. The wall pads are the only remaining item to be, and they are being installed now as we speak. Those will have the logos, et cetera, on those. So those are looking really good. The access control system with the automatic door opener buttons, et cetera, those will be complete this week by Siemens, and the bollards have been installed as well. And then finally, the fire suppression, which we've been talking about for months now, will be complete first week of August. So that will include all of the fire, the final testing with fire marshal and the jurisdictions that need to give the thumbs up, if you will. So just a couple of shots here of the gym floor finish. It looks fantastic. If you haven't seen it, it really, really turned out well with the striping and the finish as well. At Glen Hope, we've been talking about the insulation and the sheathing and the window framing and the installation. That project is now complete. The landscape and irrigation is complete. The final certificate of occupancy, which is what we're all striving to get at this point, that walk through will take place early next week. So that gives the city the, and the district really, the go ahead to either keep moving in or have classes or occupy the building. So that's a good milestone there. The concrete head wall, there's one remaining drainage system item that was just delayed. And so that'll now finally arrive next week to complete the last item on that punch list. So and then the final grading around, and you'll see in this next slide, the final grading is complete. The craftsmanship of the brick and the windows and the accent bands was really, really well done. And so it turned out nice. The final grading looks good, the irrigation's working. So that, we're real proud of that. So. The summer 2020 renovation projects line out like this. We'll start at Bear Creek Elementary. The overhead work continues in the learning commons. So what that means is just the life safety, all the wiring, duct work, the electrical conduits, all the systems above ceilings was what we call overhead work, continues throughout the learning commons. The drywall partitions are being installed. They're texturing and painting now. That'll follow. The duct work, again, overhead is being installed. Lots of duct work going on there. Had to reconfigure duct work for the new learning commons. The ceiling grid installation will follow that. The door frames come in the week of August 3, and those will be installed. And then so they'll follow back up with some touch-up paint as necessary there. The millwork, the cabinetry, will begin Monday on the 27th, which that would happen to be today. And the district furniture arrives on the 10th of August. Access control systems will begin this week, along with the duct work in the cafeteria, which is complete, and the ceiling grid has been installed there as well. So lots of overhead work happening there. A pre-construction meeting set up for the 24th with the City of Ulyss, and there's some drainage swale components to this project that the city just wants to make sure that we're following their guidelines in terms of drainage, making sure we're meeting what they have approved in our construction documents. So that happens soon. So. Got a couple of shots here. Again, a lot of the overhead work you see, when you can demolish the ceilings and save as much overhead work, you can't, you want to do that. And then some of the lights are strung up, if you will, and for safety reasons, so they can continue to work, et cetera, and run their overhead systems. You can see some of the drywall partitions happening there. And some of the walls, you see the metal studs. The majority of the drywall is in place and ready to be installed. Another couple of shots, especially the one on the right, there's some bulkhead work happening. Okay. Yeah, the one on the right really is the bulkhead work, lighting systems, duct work getting ready to be run as well. So looking good with progress there. At Bransford Elementary, again, overhead work is ongoing. Ceiling grid will be installed this week. The drywall, the process of taping, embedding, and texturing, and painting, that will begin this week. The millwork, cabinetry will begin August 6. Flooring, all the floor, new floor finish materials, let me back up. There you go. Thanks. The flooring begins the first week of August, and the furniture starts to arrive on the 13th of August. So Kyle was doing an amazing job of squaring that away and coordinating all that as well. There's some dishwasher installation this week, and the AC, air conditioning curb layouts this week. It seems, I just wanted to stop and say, there seems to be some sporadic, there's a dishwasher, there's millwork, there's just, if you recall, these were line items in the bond that we're addressing one by one, line by line. So those, that's where you see these start to show up, and you think, wow, the dishwasher. Well, it's a line item in the bond. We want to make sure we hit. So on the right side here, some of the rooftop units, as Paula mentioned, are arriving on the 18th. I think before, those dates were out a little further, actually. So to Paula's comments, the Texas Air folks and engineers have done a great job moving those things forward. Spot cooling, as you mentioned, will be used to continue the finishes, because you do need these places, excuse me, these spaces conditioned in order to put down the floor finishes and do paint work, too. So some of the rooftop units and air handlers won't arrive until the middle of September. The existing equipment is still connected and operational. And so they're able to do that. And we've coordinated with Lee Lewis on when the new equipment comes in, they'll work either nights or weekends to make those switch up. So new split systems, again, another HVAC type of system arrived last Wednesday, and will be operational in the office areas for the start of school. Okay, just a couple of pictures here. You can see really, the one on the right is the overhead work with regard to fire alarm wiring, control wires. A lot of the technology wires that are bundled up are above ceiling. So this is really kind of, it looks a little messy, but this is really the way things look. And then they button it up with ceilings. You'll see some more drywall stud work here in the learning commons with the framing of the exterior windows. And then they're starting to drop duct work in some of the locations as well. Just another couple of shots here as that gets framed out with the duct work and the sprinkler, I mean, the roof drain piping being set now and running their places. So all looking good, above ceiling. At Heritage Elementary School, the lights, new lights are being installed in the gym. Again, overhead work in the learning commons is ongoing. They're starting to button up the walls and two-siding the drywall partitions. Flooring install begins during the first week of August. The HVAC split systems installed by next week for the administration areas and the main school entrance. So that's good. That's a good positive step there. The ceiling installation to follow in these, and then the furniture arrives on the 12th of August. So good stuff there. Existing dishwasher has been removed. There's going to be some drain work done in the existing slab. And so they've got to cut the slab, install new drains. So that's happening. The dishwasher and booster heater are scheduled to arrive this week. In the gymnasium, or in the gym, the ceiling grid is being installed now. Lights will follow the completion of the grid. And the control vestibule is also receiving new ceiling grid. That'll be happening at about the same time. The PA speakers and fire strips are being relocated now. And then the rooftop units are arriving on the 11th of August, including the learning commons. So again, as we mentioned, there'll be some spot cooling in those areas so that they can continue the finishes. Some rooftop units and air handlers won't arrive till the 11th of September, as we mentioned, but the existing equipment will remain connected and operational. Again, similar looking conditions at Heritage that you've seen before. Lot of the wiring being run, sprinkler piping, duct work, lighting, et cetera. So this is, believe it or not, what it's supposed to look like at this point, as they button up and finish in haste. So just framing for walls, new partitions, new in the learning commons, make space areas. So next slide. Again, just different views from those new spaces, those new collaborative spaces, looking back out into the commons area. So learning commons. At Colleyville Elementary School, again, overhead work is complete in the new learning commons areas, our area. Painting and drywall is complete, with the exception of work related to the hollow metal door frames. And that was another item that's really, we're struggling to get kind of in a timely fashion, but they are coming. And so once those have come, they're installed, and then we can finish the paint operations as well. The concrete for the tech hub table was cut in last week. The drywall partitions, tape, texture, and painting will begin this week, and also will allow time and the areas to work for those door frames to be installed. The millwork, cabinetry work, and ceiling grid install begins the first week of August. Ceiling install will begin on the 3rd of August. Flooring also begins in the first part of August. And then the lights, the installation of the lights, the new lighting to begin the 10th of August, and all the ceiling, ceiling grid and tiles will follow that. At the control vestibule, the rough end for the kiosks begins this week, and then the furniture will arrive on the 14th of August. Overhead, new duct work being run in the learning commons. Again, very common, you can probably get, you're probably familiar with the colors and the space here. Frankly, it's hard to believe that this is, it's over 10 years old, Colleyville Elementary School. So it's just interesting to watch this. When I watched it go up, brand new, and we're renovating now. But it's coming along very, very nice. Again, some of the drywall framing for the new collaborative areas and commons spaces. At Colleyville Heritage High School, floor slab demo at the front entry is now complete. If you remember, we'll show some pictures here. That main entrance kind of came out into that little covered area, if you will. So we had to repour that floor slab, because it was a sidewalk, so it was sloped such that it wouldn't be conducive for a new occupant space. So, yeah, there you go.
Apologize, we're having a lot of mouse issues tonight.
Oh, mouse? Okay. The, let's see, new concrete floor will be repoured per the ADA guidelines this week. The temporary entrances will be installed if needed at front of school. So depending on kids and that, your situation, temporary entrances are being considered. You know, you can't get them in the front door. So that's being looked at now. The shower floor was poured this week, new shower. Learning commons has structural supports installed for the new storefront system, and the tech hub table operation continues. The learning commons storefront and door frames are now installed, the low voltage rough end, and all the electrical install will follow right after that. The drywall partitions in the learning commons now are two-sided, and paint operations to start this week, completing the cloud. Completing the cloud ceiling this week in the learning commons, so lots going on there as well. I think we've got some, let's see, yes, some additional items, millwork begins on the 3rd of August, flooring will follow that. Exhaust hoods for the kitchen equipment are being installed now, and the freezer cooler arrives the last week, so that's coming soon. They began taking down two of the three chillers to be replaced last Friday. The third chiller is going to remain operational, so you've got to remain, you've got to keep one going to keep air in there. So they're coordinating, they being Lee Lewis, they're coordinating with their subcontractors on a daily basis. They anticipate completion by eight-two of this whole area, with 15 rooftop units that will be arriving in stages between the 28th, which is tomorrow, and the 8th of August. So they're just going to be coming, as they produce them, and they set them on a truck, they're shipping them. And so that's part of what Paula spoke to earlier, is that's sort of out of sequence for these HVAC contractors sometimes. They really want all of them on a truck and delivered at once, but we just, we don't, we can't, we don't have that luxury right now. So they've agreed to do some different things, which is helping a lot. Refinishing of the floors, gym one and two are now complete. Also completed, repairing the termite damage, if you recall, there was quite a bit of that, and that's now repaired, and refinishing the floor of gym three. The ADA compliance work, there was quite a bit of ADA work to be done at these campuses, and that is underway at the high school. A couple of shots here, this was, mentioned the demo of the, that main entrance, concrete slab, and then some of the middle pictures represent some of the termite work that's being worked on and repaired. And then the picture on the right, some of the new duct work in the commons area, you'll see there. Really, just a few more shots of the tech hub tables, the flooring prep, they're getting ready to do quite a bit of flooring and painting as well in these rooms, and some of the showers with ceiling repair and some tile work and floors there as well. So quite a bit, quite a bit happening there. Some of the cleanup after the demo, and starting to think, you know, put back materials and systems above ceiling in the learning commons as well. And then these are just a couple of shots from the outside, looking back at the concrete slab work that's done to make that ready for the occupied space of the vestibule, control That's just a final look at that concrete work, which actually, it came out really, really nice for the tight quarters that they were in. Just a few more shots of the overhead work at the learning commons areas. You can just see quite a bit of work that's happened already, and still quite a bit to go, so making a big push. And then the refinished gym floors at the high school really, really turned out nice. If you haven't seen those, those are worth seeing, they turned out really, really nice. We'll move over to swim center and talk a little bit, just a quick update, the resonous flooring is now complete. The large ceiling fans have been installed above the swimming pool area. The plaster is complete, and the pool is now filled, again. So the starting blocks are installed. The glazing, which is the glass in the storefront, on the outside of the building will begin on the 10th of August. The sound equipment was completed last week. Permanent power will be on by the middle of this week. Striping contractor will be on site, there's a little bit of striping in the parking lots and the spaces that were redone, so that'll happen starting tomorrow. The rooftop units will arrive on the 10th of August, and will be installed the following week. Lockers, the new lockers are now installed, and the pool contractor's working on the equipment, the final button-up equipment in those tight-quarter equipment rooms within that facility. So that's, there's a lot happening there. And a few shots, this was a little bit earlier, before the final plaster was installed and the water, obviously, the pool filled with the water. These are just a couple of shots of the overhead, the fans, the resonous flooring on the right. Just, it's a great, it's a great floor you've got there, and it's going to last a long time. So again, a lot of the overhead work, ceiling fans, tight quarters in the equipment room, and then the lockers, the phenolic lockers that are specifically designed for this type of environment with the chlorine. Really, some button-up work here before the pool's filled, this is some of the tile work, and the final plaster work right before the water goes in.
Can see the new starting blocks there in the distant, on the left side.
Yep, yep.
Hard to see, but they've got logos in them, so they look really good as well.
Really nice. And then a couple other projects here at the administration building, renovation project, the flooring is complete now. The entrance video conference device and the installation will be complete this week. Infinity Sound is your sound contractor, and completing their work on the boardroom starting tomorrow. The courtyard improvements are nearing completion, the planting is installed, and the pavers that go in there as part of that design are being installed today, it looks really, really good. The exterior grading around the building continues, it's almost complete, and the furniture arrives this week as well. The new office layout near the back of the building is complete. Testing and balancing of all the HVAC system to be complete this week as well. And then prior to completion of the ceiling tile installation, all that test and balance stuff happens. So movers will be on site this week, to move items from Heritage Middle School, and OC Taylor back to the administration building. Quite a bit of stuff happening. Mentioned the courtyard, that's looking really, really nice, just a couple of shots there, pavers.
Not working, there it goes.
There you go. The flooring, cabinetry work here, again, now complete, just buttoning up a few fans here on the technology side at the dais, and, I mean, it's just ready to go. Just a few shots here of the flooring being complete, how they protected different elements of the building while this work was going on. I think, I think overall, Sawyers has done a really, really good job, so. And then just briefly touch on, we talked a little bit about the Creek Elementary and Cross Timbers Middle School drainage studies, and in general, these are two different projects that are about spot. We now have the geotechnical reports in. Pateco Coke, which is the PKCE, that's our civil engineer, is now looking at those and designing options and solutions for us to consider. So there's not a lot to show you, I just wanted to mention that that's still ongoing at those two projects, and that we should have a little bit more to talk about next month. And then the 2021 projects, we'll finish up here with, just a kind of a quick reminder, there'll be a little bit more work at the admin building, facilities building, warehouse, transportation, PDEC, and ECDC, and there's just a little bit left. This will finish out the bond program in terms of the big spreadsheet and the line items contained within. Our team have, we've spent really, gosh, Paula, the last couple of weeks walking each of those buildings, and really going line by line on that bond spreadsheet to make sure, because if you'll recall, those line items at this point are a little over five years old. And so there's times during that period where maybe the facilities department has done one or two of those items, or it's just no longer needed, it's out of date, et cetera. So our teams are going line by line to ascertain, do we do it, do we not? And so we've been able to meet with Paula's team to come up with the final scope that will go into those documents. And here's just the schedule of where we are, schematic design phase, I'll just, I'll go all the way down to our construction documents, and we will sign and seal a bid set of documents January the 18th. And so the guaranteed max proposals will come February 8th, and will be ready to go on the 19th. So still quite a bit of work to do, but just wanted to give you a brief update on the 2021 projects. I believe, Paula, that would be it, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
There's a lot going on.
That's the most.
Oh my, oh my. That's the longest one we've had in a while. That is so exciting to see, just think about how great these schools are going to look when they, when they open up and ready for us to get back in there. How excited these kids are going to be to see these improvements.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you for all your work, thank you, Paula. Oh my gosh, and your team.
Yes, ma'am, agreed.
Anybody have questions for Gary? I think this is your second board meeting tonight, so I bet you, you're ready to walk off.
Yes, ma'am, no, this is good, this is, this is.
So any questions for Gary, anything going on?
Kind of in a weird office, so it's like, that looks weird behind me.
No questions, I think that's it, Gary.
Okay.
Your night is it?
It's great to see everybody.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item I, random drug testing summary report for 2019, 2020.
Yes, this is our yearly report of this particular program, that's, again, designed to help keep our kids safe, and so I believe Dr. Schnouts, is Coach Gerlick here to visit with us about that?
Yes, sir, I think he's trying to come over to his side. Brian, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let's see, Ryan, oop, there we go. Let me get that out of the way. Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Well, trustees, good evening again. I want to walk everybody through our 2019, 2020 school year, our random drug testing summary. Just a few reminders, when we, the school year obviously was cut short, so we went September through February this year, so we got six months worth of testing. And one thing we really focused on this year, when we worked with our lab, the drug company who does this stuff for us, is a variation of times. We did, we had some tests this year where we did the same day and the same time at both schools. We had some where we did it on one day at one place, a different at another place, so we really tried to vary things up a little bit, so that we weren't as predictable during the school year. Historically, we usually do our tests at 9:00 AM or 1:30 PM, and most of the time, these sessions last typically one to two hours, just depends upon certain things, obviously, with kids and getting the test done. When we do our drug testing, we've always asked the lab to send us roughly 65 to 70 student ID numbers, and I want to remind everybody that we don't, we don't do student names, it's all through ID numbers. And when the lab sends us those ID numbers, we then work to get 40 tests per campus per month, and that's what we, that's the number we shoot for. Sometimes we get a couple of more, sometimes a little bit less, but they're always both within a couple of tests of each other each month. Down at the bottom there, we just, we always stay, at the end of the year, we are, we're staying within our local policies, which is between 10 and 40% of our population, and we were, we were right on track until COVID hit, to be right at between 28 and 30%. So we were right at that percentage where we wanted to be at. We actually ended the year, we're testing about 20% of them, so the COVID closure obviously affected our percentages. On the, get that thing out of the way. Down at the bottom there, you're going to see that the total number of students between both campuses that we did test this year was 480. We had zero kids refuse to take the test this year, and we ended up with five positive tests. So out of our 480 kids, just over, just over a percent of them tested positive during this COVID year. As we go through, when we get into our categories now of what they all tested for, on the far-right-hand side, the 2019, 2020 school year, if you scroll down to about the fourth item, we, all five tests were positive for marijuana this year. We didn't have positive tests in any other category, so we were at five, and again, we still had three months of the school year left. So when we broke down both of our campuses, this is where our actual totals were. Colleyville Heritage, we had tested 242 kids, Grapevine High School was at 238, so as a district, we were sitting at 480. Two of our tests that test positive were at Colleyville Heritage, and three were at Grapevine High School. So those were our five positive tests for the school year. And does anybody have any questions?
Thank, can you go ahead and remove that, so we can see everyone?
Come on.
If you would, please.
Let's get back off there. There we go.
And as soon as you do that, someone's going to ask you to pull it back up, so I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
If you'll just tell it to stop sharing, Brian.
Oops, sorry.
You're good.
There we go.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Becky? Yes?
I guess Mike, oh, yeah. So, refresh my memory, was it this year that we had expanded the extracurricular activities that fell under this policy?
Those changes will go into effect this coming school year, 2020, 21 school year, yes.
Okay, that's right.
Yes.
What's that school year, what's the school, next school year going to look like? I mean, being that we're not, not there, how are you going to?
It's funny you say that, I started thinking about that this weekend, to be honest, is with our, with our drug testing, what is that going to look like this year? We're going to have some kids that are going to be online, some of them are going to be coming to school during the day, so to be honest, that's a really good question, and I don't have an answer for it yet, but we've started thinking about, how are we going to implement our drug testing policy?
Lisa?
I'm sorry, Jesse?
Yeah, and adding on to our question, in terms of the testing that took place that only went through February, and then we had COVID and the shutdown, and then to your response, Brian, for this coming year, are we able to negotiate cost with the company doing the testing, given the fact that we didn't have all of the tests conducted that we probably would have had, had the school year continued, number one? Number two, going forward this next year, having no idea how that's going to be implemented, is there, are there going to be a process or procedures in place for us to maybe possibly renegotiate that? Just a question.
No, absolutely, no, that's something that we certainly, that, like I said, over the weekend, a lot of things started hitting my mind about how are we going to move forward, and we did, we had three months last year, and what normally happens, and we're going to go into this next year, is we pay month by month, that we'll pay for our, well, 80 tests between both high schools, and we're going to start paying it on a monthly basis. So moving forward, we're going to be in really good shape, and I'd have to go back and look, because I don't want to give you wrong information, but I think we even started this back in January of this past school year, so I don't believe we had paid for March, April, and May, but I will go back and check that to look at that.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? None. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, it'll be real, real curious, Brian, once you make that decision, Dr. Schnouts, if y'all could either give us in a board update, or let us know what this next school, what y'all decided this next school year is going to look like?
Absolutely. We'll provide that information as soon as we get it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We'll move on to item I, update regarding the market status of property and casualty coverage. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this is an item that, for information, of course, for our trustees about the particular market of property and casualty coverage, and so I'll ask Paula to take us a little bit further with this, with this item.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. We actually have James Charlesworth with Charlesworth Consulting that is with us, and I think Kyle is bringing over, as well as Ms. I think Kyle is bringing over, as well as Michelle Lynn, our Director of Risk Management. She's give a backup and support. There's Mr. Charlesworth. Thank you, sir. Are you prepared to share your screen, or should I try to? All I have is the PDF, sir.
As you can tell by my gray hair, I'm not as计算机 computer savvy as some. I've got a PDF on my screen as well. I can try to share. But why don't we kind of get started, then we'll, we'll figure it out.
All right. Kyle, if you want to give me presenter rights, I'll bring up the PDF so that it can be viewed.
Okay.
And while we're working on that, first of all, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, for giving me this opportunity. James Charlesworth, Charlesworth Consulting, 12712 Park Central Drive, Suite 100, Dallas, Texas. Tonight, we wanted to talk briefly about the Property and Liability Insurance Marketing Project, and also a little bit about the state of the insurance marketplace. So before we talk about the project, I thought it'd be better to talk about the market conditions, which are really, are really challenging right now. Due to local weather patterns, national, international events, insurance has gotten to be very difficult, especially in North Texas, North Texas schools, et cetera. So insurance has not been profitable for insurance companies. And so what we're seeing is significant increases in not only costs, but reduction in capacity, meaning less number of insurance companies are interested in even bidding insurance for school districts in your area. Now, even though you not, you have not had any significant losses yourselves, the entire North Dallas, North Texas region has really been hit by a lot of windstorm and hails, paid a lot of losses. So this slide here is a benchmark report that has been put together by a local insurance agent, showing 12 school districts in your area. I removed the names because I didn't think it was relevant. But if you look at, basically, it's three years of losses, or three years of premium, total premiums, with the yellow line being their student population. And as you can see, everybody is really feeling it. Some of them, especially towards the right side, were on multi-year rate guarantees that expired, and those are, I just refer to them as budget busters. I mean, they are, when you, when you see increases in 2%, 3%, 400%, there's just really no way to predict that. So, so what's happened is that with premiums, the way they are, schools are having, schools have high values in a small area. So concentration of risk is a real challenge for insurance companies. They just don't want it. So what happens is they just go insure other properties. So we have to be very creative when it comes to how we insure school districts, and property is the main driver of your premiums. So the next slide, I only have two slides, so going to be brief tonight. This is an example of what a typical property insurance program looks like. The days of going to a single insurance company and getting them to write to your property insurance, those are, those are long gone, and we don't see that changing in for the foreseeable future. So what happens, happens is your insurance agent actually literally builds your insurance policy. So they'll go out and they'll get the first seven, five, seven and a half, 10 million. They might have to find three insurers to go in together, that's called a quota share, to build that first 10 million. And then they'll find some other insurers to get the next 20 million, and somebody else to get the next 100 million. And it goes up and up and up. And it's very common now in your area for anywhere from six to 12 insurance companies to have to go in together to build the insurance program. It's just, it's a very difficult time that drives up premiums. Another thing that's important to remember is, is that the premiums were artificially low for a long period of time. We came off of a 15-year soft cycle for insurance, and rates were as low as 3, 4 cents per hundred. Now, if you think about you're just homeowners, if you take the value of your home divided by 100, and times a times a nickel, that's what your homeowner's insurance property rate would be, your cost would be. That's a, it's very low. Well, now that it's in the 15, 16, 18 cent range, which is still a good deal, but when you're starting at five, it's quite a shock. So that kind of gets us to our insurance property marketing project. So back in March, we began developing an RFP based on your current program and a risk assessment that we performed. And then we worked with Michelle Lynn and Purchasing to build the RFP, get it posted, and it was posted about eight weeks ago pursuant to your procurement policies. Each agent, insurance agent that responded was asked to provide details about who they wanted to approach, what insurance companies they wanted to approach. Insurance companies will only accept a, they'll only work with one agent. So if, if five agents go to travelers, they're going to say, who do you want us to work with? So we start the project by saying, who do you want to approach? What is your experience with that insurance company? What is your experience with school districts, specifically school districts in North Texas? And then from that, we try to place the best markets with the best agents. Now, because of how the property insurance is structured, like in the graph in front of you, we have to concentrate the assignments to the best agent. So what we did was, we selected one agent who got their markets of choice. The other agents were still provided markets that were not requested by one agent, and then they went to the market. Every agent that was participating stated that if they did not get the majority of their markets, they could not create a competitive program, because they all agreed that you have to have full access to the market in order to build the best program. And so all the other agents withdrew. There was no complaints. They knew that was the best solution to get you the best possible program, because we're competing against the TASB program, which is an excellent program. So basically, over the last eight weeks, we've been answering, overriding questions, completing applications. And when we say we, it's basically been Michelle and her team. And the quotes are coming in, we're analyzing them now, and then in two, three weeks, four weeks, we're going to be back in front of you with, with all the details. But we thought, before we got to that point, we kind of talked, get a high-level talk about how it's working, how complicated it is, and give you a chance to ask any questions you might have at this stage, before we get into the nuts and bolts of the options for your consideration. Thank you, Kyle, for handling that.
So, Dr. Ryan, I know we've taken this a little bit out of order, but of course, as, as he mentioned, we've had the RFP out on the street. One of the reasons we did that is we'd had multiple years of increases. It's always good to check the market, which is what we've done. Michelle and the purchasing team have, have put that out there and worked through that process. Our policies basically expire at the end of August. We used to be bringing a recommendation in August. We wanted to go ahead and give you an update about the market and what, kind of what it's looking like right now, and where this might be headed. So with that, Dr. Ryan, I'll, this was really just an information item, there's no recommendations. So if there are any questions, we can take those now.
Yes, thank you, Paula and James. We appreciate the information, and we know we'll be looking forward to this item next month. But we did want the board to kind of understand a little bit behind the scenes about what, what might go together to, to be able to provide this, and we'll be subject to your questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? None? So we, so we will be seeing you again in August?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. So my understanding, Paula, so we put this out for bid, is that all this comes down to? We put this out, and we only had one come back? Is that what it comes down to?
Well, no, we haven't covered what we, what we have. We're just, we wanted to make sure that you understood how complicated the market was, where the increases are coming from. We don't just, it's not just a policy for property coverage alone. If you look at your agenda item, it covers our legal liability, all of our school liability, which is very important to us as a school district. But property, because of its size and cost, tends to derive what you do with the entire package. And as I've kind of mentioned previously in some of the updates, with TASB, it's an all or nothing proposition. You buy it all together as one package, they won't let you pull property apart from the other. And so there are a lot of different variables, which is part of the reason that we brought in a third party who is an expert in the industry, has been working with school districts for a long time, and looking at this kind of stuff. Michelle and her expertise in trying to go through this painstakingly. It's not a bad process for us. It's probably something that we should do periodically, of course. You're always checking the market, and through going through the process, we, we were able, answering questions in terms of the applications to the insurance market, we were able to learn even more about our district. And they were able to learn more about our district and our loss, our losses, which have not been significant really over the course of years. So we don't know completely what we'll get in August, but it could, could come down to one choice and a not-so-great choice.
Okay. Becky, you have a question?
Well, just a comment to kind of dovetail on what Paula was saying, because of course, being on the TASB board now, we get the update each quarter from Risk Management, and Dubrovka Romano runs an amazing program over there. But, I mean, Paula's right, and so is James, because I see the updates now. The wind and hailstorm damages have clobbered the Texas insurance market. If you didn't have to cover your property, you could probably still find reasonably-priced insurance. But the property is just, it's a killer right now. So I wish, I wish I had better news in the TASB end, but I mean.
Correct.
Right. It's bad out there. It just is.
And one of the other things that we've had some concern about this, as we've grown as a district, is whether or not TASB would be able to continue to carry us. We've seen some gaps or changes in their coverage that we, too, want to take a look at and take care of, and basically spread our risks somewhere else. And so it could be that we're recommending certain things in addition to what we've done traditionally as a way to move forward for our district and make sure that we're, we're protecting what we need to.
Yeah, the vast majority of school districts in Texas are not big, and so it's a lot easier when you're covering the smaller districts. But yeah, you get to the size of us and everybody here in the metroplex, and we all get hit by the same weather at the same time, right? So I can guess which school district that was that shot up on your graph there, and they're probably still cleaning up from the tornadoes.
Absolutely. Thank you, Becky. Thank you both, and we will see you in August.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to item K, review owner contingency expenditures. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, you can see that we just had a few owner contingencies signatures, and we'll be glad to answer any questions if you have.
You have any questions? No? Move on to item L, review the 2020-2021 board planning calendar.
Yes, just a couple of changes. In July, you can see that the, we dealt with the agreement of purchase attendance credits. Typically, we do that in August. We had to do that this evening. And the same thing for scheduling the meeting to adopt the tax rate. And then all of a sudden, also, under special events, the Board and Superintendent Annual Team Building Session has been postponed until we get a little bit more information about when that would be more, more appropriate time to do that.
Okay. Any questions? Move on to item M, request for reports to the board. Do I have any? Becky, did you have something?
It's not so much a report to the board, but something just struck me as I was looking at the board planning calendar, because we'll get the student handbook next month. And I know some other districts around us have been tightening up their student discipline policies, particularly as it relates towards kids who are intentionally coughing on other kids, on teachers. And so is that something that we need to have a report on, that is being looked at with the student handbook? Where, where are we going there?
So that's a good point, and I know, I know that we've got folks that are working on that, so I'll just add that to the list of things, and we'll make sure that we'll report that back to, to the board about where we, where we land on that.
Thank you, Becky. So in item M, reports, any reports to the board? None? Move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion or anything to pull? Jesse?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve items A through K on the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Jesse. Now, Louis?
I'll second.
Thank you, Louis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the items A through K on this consent agenda? Motion carries 7-0. Move on to announcements. Do we have any of those?
I do.
Mindy?
I just want everybody to go ahead and put September 16th on your calendar. That will be our first NTASB meeting. It will be on an online format, and we're going to have the speaker, William Gumbert, and he is going to talk specifically about some of the impacts or threats from charters in this time of COVID. So I think it'll be a great program. I'll have time and everything at our next meeting, but wanted y'all to have that heads up.
Mindy, you just made Jesse so proud. I mean, you were the first thing out. You had your hand up, you were ready. You just made, you just made, oh, you're just a proud daddy right now.
There's some bits I used to fill on that board, so you never.
Beaming. He's beaming, an R around him even.
I know. I love it. Great job. Great job. You rock. I love it.
I wanted to let y'all know, too, that we always have the new teacher luncheon, or the Education Foundation and the Women's Division, Greatvine Women's Division, has a new teacher luncheon. That has been canceled for this year. We're still doing something for the new teachers. So just hope you want to reach out to the Education Foundation, look for donations or gift cards, and you can actually adopt and sponsor a new teacher coming in. So they're thinking outside the box to welcome our new teachers, but just not in the same way. Just to let y'all know that, if you want to reach out to the, to the foundation. So, anything?
I just want to share a little bit of good news with you guys. Back in May, you guys had approved an order for us to go out to the market to reset our variable interest rate bond. And so we did that today, and we got an all-in true interest rate of 0.73%. So we were able to lower that interest rate from 1.34% of variable rate to 0.73%. And we also shaved nine years off of the maturity.
Oh, wow.
Saved about 4.9 million in future bond, bond cost. So I thought it was appropriate to.
That's awesome.
That is fantastic.
Happy financial news.
You got to end the meeting on a positive note.
There is no other.
Why don't you leave your section with that?
Yeah. There is no other announcement that can even touch that, so.
Yeah, awesome.
That is, that is great news. Thank you, Diane, for ending our, ending our night with such great news.
Thank you.
Does anybody have, anybody else have anything? No? At this point, then, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Jesse?
So move.
In a second. No one? Everybody wants to stay? I need a second. Mindy? All of you in favor?
[inaudible].
Motion carries 7-0. Y'all stay safe, stay well, and we will, I know, be seeing you soon. Take care. Thank you, Kyle.